Application submitted by the Summit Ridge Energy LLC to develop a 3.00 M W A C Commercial Solar Energy Facility in Ellington Township, southwest of Fowler, Illinois. I'd ask the clerk to call roll, please, and then we'll introduce our facilitator.
Dave Bellis.
Here.
Les Post.
Here.
David McLeary.
Here.
Ryan Kempert.
Here.
Josenger.
Here.
Also present from the county boards, Tim Finley, Keith Callaway. Um, for county representatives, Mr. Frankenhoff, Mr. Farha, and Mr. Neekemper also present.
Great, thank you. Um, county has, um, hired Barney Bear as our attorney to facilitate this hearing, so I will turn it over to Mr. Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Barney Bear. According to the ordinance, my title is Hearing Facilitator. My job is to make sure that there's a record that is complete, allow people to testify that submitted a notification that they were going to testify. And there's also a procedure for those that wanted to speak that they, um, give notice to the clerk. Now, it's my understanding that for the, nobody has given notice, is that correct? Um, unless I get an objection from any member of the committee, the way we did it last time, is that if somebody wanted to make a statement, that we were going to allow them to make a statement, not testify and, um, or ask questions necessarily, but to make a statement and from the, from the gallery, there are two people that have indicated they're going to make statements and I, I have their, their names. Uh, the order of business or the, the, uh, conducting the hearing is after I make my preliminary remarks, we'll ask that a member from Summit Ridge, uh, be sworn in and provide testimony. Beforehand, I want to make a record, and I've marked as exhibit one, showing that notice of this public hearing was published in the Herald-Wig pursuant to statute and the, um, code of Adams County. The publication occurred on May 18th and June 5th of 2024. In addition, the Adams County Highway Department sent a notification, uh, to landowners and, um, adjacent to the property as well as the township trustees. Um, I think it's Ellington, is it not? Um, so having said that, I got that marked as an exhibit at the end of the hearing. I'll give that to, well, I'll give that to the clerk at this time. And I'd ask the, the clerk, after the hearing, there's been a application that is submitted, which I have in front of me. If we could mark that as exhibit two and just make that part of the record. Um, having said that, if a member of Summit Ridge could step forward and get sworn in by the reporter?
I do.
Yes.
And do I just press? Do I need to press anything? Okay.
Go ahead. Yeah, rather than ask questions, you can make a narrative if you're prepared to do so and also make reference to, um, any pictures that you present to the committee.
Okay, perfect. Um, I have a couple of remarks and then, um, if we're able to show the PowerPoint, that'll help everybody see visually. You can actually go to the next slide. Yeah, we'll start there. Um, so thank you, Adams County Board, county staff, and the community for allowing me to present on behalf of our project today. I'm Bridget Callahan. I'm here representing the project company Fowler Illinois Solar One LLC, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Summit Ridge Energy. Summit Ridge Energy is a long-term owner and operator of community solar projects. Um, that means that we own the project for the long haul rather than, um, selling it to other developers. That is typically for a term of 25 to 40 years. We have currently over 50 community solar projects active in operation in Illinois in 23 counties. And we have another 40 that are either in construction or development throughout the state as well. Um, so today I'll be presenting the special use permit application for a 3-megawatt community solar project, um, which we're also referring to as the Fowler Mixer Project. It's located at 7817 Eubanks Road in Fowler, um, and that parcel is currently being used for agricultural purposes. So the project is seeking a special use permit in accordance with Adams County Ordinance Number 2024-02-001-009, um, which regulates commercial solar energy facilities. The permit was also submitted in accordance, um, with the Illinois State Regulations for commercial solar, solar facilities as well. So this project in particular is going to connect overhead to the local Ameren infrastructure, the 34, uh, 5 KV line. Um, and just to give you an idea of where we are with Ameren, we've already submitted our application. We have our supplemental review back, which means they've given us an initial cost estimate for what it's going to be to, to build the infrastructure to support the project. We've had a site walk with Ameren as well, um, to talk about pole locations and point of interconnection. They will provide the interconnection agreement back and detailed cost estimate to us in the next, um, six weeks. That's due back on August 1st. Um, besides that, the project does have all its environmental approvals already. It has entered into the, um, the AMA, the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement with the state as well. Um, we have submitted a draft decommissioning plan for review. So the project in its entirety includes the panels, inverters, and then an access gravel road, um, pollinator-friendly vegetative cover, and then that is surrounded by a locked fence as well. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll run through a couple of slides here just to orient, um, the board as well as the community on where the, the project is located. So it is out, um, in the county. Um, so we're not within, you know, the 1.5-mile radius of Quincy. Um, we can go to the next slide if possible. Uh, this will provide you a bit of a rendering of where the, um, solar array is planned as well, so we'll hold on that for just a second. Um, and then this slide is also meant to show some of the, um, screening that we are going to have, um, you know, with the support of the county board to, um, if needed, uh, we'll have screening for anyone who's impacted around the array. Um, we do have the native pollinator, um, species that'll be grown underneath the panels as well. So I'll hold on that for just a second. Okay, you can go to the next slide. Um, and this, uh, gives you a little bit of a more detailed image of the solar array as well with regard to any setbacks from property lines. Um, those are in accordance with both the county ordinance as well as the state ordinance as well, um, which is 150 feet setback from any non-participating structures and then 50 feet from any, um, any other boundary lines as well. Um, you can go to the next slide. And, um, I think I have one more slide after this perhaps as well. This is, um, I'll actually hold on this slide for just a minute. So this shows the distance from all the homes in the area as well. Um, so those are measurements up to the fence on the south side. So you can see, um, with the, there's the one project that's closest. It's 177 feet, so that is above the 150 feet that's required. Um, and then the other properties there are a bit further off. You can go to the next slide, please. Um, so one other item just for, um, the board and the community to be aware of, this is a community solar project. So what that means is, once the project is up and running, there'll be subscribers to the project. Um, those can be either individuals or businesses. And that allows the subscribers of the project to actually save money on their electricity bill. So this makes us a, a little bit different than, uh, commercial and industrial solar, where all of the cost savings are going to one entity. This allows that to be, um, shared between individuals and community members as well as businesses. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so, um, another, um, item that I'd like to cover as well is just the benefits that this project would have to the community as well. Um, so we do have the subscription model with the community solar project, so that does allow subscribers to actually receive cost benefit for their, um, electricity bill, bills if they are to subscribe to the project. Um, this does also help get the community towards Illinois' clean energy goal by 2050. And then we are, um, planning for the screening around the project as well as pollinator-friendly habitat. Um, I will mention as well, one item on, that's not on the slide, would be, uh, property tax revenue as well, um, that would go to the county. So the solar developers, Summit Ridge, would be responsible for any, um, property tax increases as a result of the project. And we can go to the next slide. Okay, and, um, this is my colleague's contact information, but I'm happy to provide my contact information as well. Um, my name is Bridget Callahan. I'm also with Summit Ridge. Um, with that, would it be helpful for us to run through the findings of fact?
Yes, if you can do it in, in, in summary form, uh,
Okay.
with the information that you have. I, I think a lot of it's in the application itself, but if you would, please.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I believe you've been provided with a copy of the findings of fact, so I'm happy to run through, um, this for, the fact of findings for this project as well, um, just to run through that. And you don't want me to run through line by line, rather more of a summary would be most helpful?
And then if anybody has any follow-up questions to, to make the record.
Okay.
Like, you know, if you have a number of panels.
Okay.
off the top of your head.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I may have missed it. Did you have a, a slide with the, the layout?
Mm-hmm. Do you want to actually run? I guess we can run back to, um, that. I think that would be helpful to keep on the screen.
If you would, please.
as we're discussing. Um, so if you could run back to the slide that has the circles on the left side. I think that's probably the most helpful one. Okay, um, so in terms of the project, um, this project is going to consist of 7,560 solar panels, plus or minus about 10%, depending on what, uh, panels we're able to procure in the end. And we do expect construction of the project to take between seven and nine months. Um, our current estimated completion date on the project is May of 2026. That is mostly defined by Ameren's ability, um, to upgrade their infrastructure, since this is a 34.5 KV interconnection, it takes longer than the last project that was presented, um, to the board a couple of weeks back. So that's what's driving that May 2026 deadline. Um, let's see, what else would be helpful to use here? The racking system will be pile driven, um, as well. Let's see. And then, um, the pile driving is the loudest part of the construction of the project, so that is something that we want to talk about. That'll only take about two weeks out of that total construction timeframe. And the noise that would be generated would be about 120 decibels from 10 feet away. Um, what that means in practice, um, is that it is going to, going to be loud for those two weeks. Um, that'll be the loudest part of the entire construction project. Um, and we can work within, you know, the bounds of the county to make sure that we're being as disrupt, as little disruptive as possible, but that will be quite, quite loud for those two weeks. Um, this application was submitted in, um, earlier this year and public notice of the project was given on May 18th and June 6th in the newspaper. Um, and a notice of this public hearing was mailed to the adjacent landowners as well. Um, we have.
If you could go to the, the, start with the findings of fact.
Okay. Um, so in terms of the special use permit application, there was a site plan that was submitted to the board that included all of the necessary conditions. Um, happy to take any questions about those specifically. And we did also submit the proposed project conditions as well along with the application. Um, in terms of the design and installation, we will also be building this project with all industry standards in mind. Um, we do not have a final geotechnical report completed at this time, but we do have that on order and that will be completed soon. Um, that can be provided to the county when it is completed. There is, um, going to be cab wiring on this project, so that is a slight variation from how the ordinance is written, where all, uh, wiring needs to be underground. This would be an above-ground cable management system between arrays. Um, so we can talk about that as well if that would be allowable. Um, I believe that was allowed on the last project. The, um, the former project Quincy McNay that was reviewed, uh, last month as well. In terms of the interconnection agreement, I discussed that in the opening remarks. That is not yet signed. Uh, we would expect the interconnection agreement to be signed with Ameren in August of this year. Everything is on track so far with that, um, but it does take them to, some time to complete their studies. At the max height, this project would be 12 feet. Um, this project will include all necessary warning signs as well, um, in accordance with the findings of fact and ordinance. We are also covering all setbacks as required by the ordinance and state law as well. We can look at those on, um, the site plan if there's a question about any of, uh, the particular setbacks, but that is 150 feet from non-participating dwellings, and then it's 50 feet from all other boundary lines. That's a bit of a summary, but that's, um, what applies to this project in particular. The project will be fenced with a seven-foot fence. And then we are proposing screening as well around the perimeter. Um, we're currently, we're currently proposing an evergreen tree that are 10 feet apart, but that can be discussed as well with the county. That's a starting place. Um, in terms of weed control, we are using a pollinator-friendly seed mix. We'd be happy to have that reviewed by, um, any party that the county would like us to, and we would also abide by any weed control measures as well. Um, this project does not propose any lighting, so that section should, um, should not apply. And then we do abide by all the noise, um, levels as well.
Do you have an idea of what the noi, the noise level, if any, in the operation of the facility?
Um, yes. So, once the project is operational, the inverter would be approximately 30, 35.8 decibels, which is about the, uh, noise of a whisper. And then for comparison's sake, a normal conversation between two people would be 60 decibels. Um, in terms of construction and performance, um, we'd be following all national electric codes. Uh, we would have all sign, signage, warning signs that's going to be required. Um, outdoor storage, we are proposing a small shed on-site to store spare parts. Um, so that can be discussed in the Q and A as well. And then I mentioned geotech, um, already, but that can be provided to, the board is requested. That has not been completed yet. Um, but that is on order with the geotechnical surveyor. And then in terms of endangered species, wetlands, um, the review that we do there, um, we submit to the state the ECOCAT report. Um, that has been submitted. They did not come back with any mitigation that they were going to require. So, um, no further action is necessary in terms of endangered and threatened species. And then in terms of wetlands, there's no wetlands on-site, um, so we're avoiding any sensitive areas there. Um, the AMA, we did already execute that with the state, so that has been executed as of April 19th, 2024. And then, um, the next couple of conditions we are still working on, I would say, so, um, as built, um, let's see, what does it say? As-built maps and plans would be submitted after construction, so we will abide by that. And then the road use agreement, this has not yet been finalized, so this still is in progress. I would expect that that be a condition of our approval that we'll need to enter into the road use agreement for this project. Um, we have started on that, but we have not yet executed it. Um, we'll also be submitting an O and M plan, operations and maintenance. Um, we can coordinate with the local emergency providers as needed. And water sanitary, there's, um, there's nothing on-site that we would need to comply with there. Um, for the drainage systems, for, um, drain tile or any mitigation with regard to stormwater, we'll be completing a drain tile survey. And if we hit any drain tile, either before or after construction, we would mitigate that, um, to ensure there's no issues on-site and then on neighboring properties as well. Um, let's see. Insurance, we can provide a copy of our insurance to the county. Um, I believe that's been provided in the past as well, but we can do that again. Um, we have also submitted the project to the state historical preservation organization. They did not require any further review, so this project was, um, not impacting any sensitive areas from that perspective. And then a decommissioning plan was submitted along with the application. Um, that was in the amount of $389,673. Um, we would post a bond for that amount or another amount agreeable by the county, um, before construction or within a year of the operation of construction per the state law. And let's see here. Is there, should I keep going?
No, I think that, yeah, right. I, I know that was rather dry, but there has to be findings of fact that need to be made. Um, at this point, if any of the committee members or, I don't know, if Mr. Frankenhoff, if you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Like there was a few unanswered are going to be done.
That's right.
Uh, unlike the last one. Um, I'm guessing Mr. Frankenhoff's going to keep an eye on all that.
That's correct. Um, the, the way to look at this, as far as the process, for lack of a better term, I'd, I'd say this is a, a preliminary stage that if the, if this committee tonight gave preliminary approval, there would be findings of facts that would be submitted at the next committee meeting, which is the second Tuesday of July, and presented to the Adams County Board, and they would give approval just for the permit, which is the first step. Um, then there would be a building permit that would be issued, which we didn't talk about a timeframe, but I would imagine sometime in September or October would be the target date. Um, and during that time, certain things would have to be, uh, met. For example, the, the road agreement with the Ellington Township, as well as, uh, the certification from the engineer and, and other things that you've, you've talked about. Um, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it's fine.
And there's, you know, there's other things like, uh, Mr. Frankenhoff noticed that the AMA agreement, although it's presented and it's got the signature line for it, hasn't, we don't have a copy of the sign.
Okay.
So obviously, we'd want a signed copy of the agreement by the, by the state before we got a building permit, but.
Was there anything else like, like that that was noticed? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, well, here, let's, don't make it a secret of it. There was a, a W-9 form attached in the application, which I don't think needs to be there.
Yeah.
Um, and the, the memorandum of lease, I assume, has been recorded with the recorder's office. And the, we would need a stamped copy of that, which we could probably get ourselves. But that needs to be submitted.
Let me see if I have a recording date on that. Um, I don't have the date of recording, but I have that it was recorded, so that should be easy enough to, to provide. So signed, fully signed AMA, um, the recorded memorandum of, of lease, okay.
I had a couple of questions over here. Looked over here. No, it's okay. One, thank you for your time, because I feel like, you know, we're kind of going through the application process, literally for a building permit and then also specialty is. Um, so I appreciate that. I have two. Again, I've only lived out here for, you know, a couple of years, but with, uh, Edison and PG&E with the solar, it's like any excess that couldn't be stored. The, uh, user ended up getting charged for the electricity going back to the main provider, which in this case would be Ameren. Uh, are you guys going to be charged for any excess on those days when you're, uh, generating that?
Uh, we shouldn't be. Occasionally, Ameren would, um, if we were sending back more than they could handle, they would, uh, turn part of our system off. That's very rare, but that is a possibility. Um, if, for whatever reason, they did not want that load on the line at that given moment, they have control to either turn us off completely or to, um, to reduce the load that's coming back on the line. I would say for a project of this size, it happens very infrequently. Um, and we wouldn't necessarily be charged by them, but that being said, we also wouldn't have the revenue because we couldn't sell that either. Um, yeah.
Okay, so in that charge, it sounds kind of like we're getting into the wind farms, because the wind ch, wind farms, when they shut it off and that, there's also a cost for that that goes back to whoever has the wind farm. So who's that, who's actually initially going to be paying for the, for the charges?
Um, well, there isn't necessarily a charge as much. It's called curtailment, so we wouldn't have, I guess, the kilowatt hours to sell to a subscriber. Um, but that being said, that would ultimately fall on the developer if there was something that arose. I wouldn't expect it, um, to happen, but at the end of the day, that does come back to the developer.
And I can appreciate that. I just, I've seen an experience where no one expected it, and then it happened, and it was like several thousand dollars for the shut-offs or whatever the use was. Okay, well, that's one. And then twos, what do you, um, now that we have preliminaries, what do you have for expected life of the panels and then storage before you have to start replacing?
Um, so the panels have warranty for the life of the contract, um, so that would be the 25 years. We would start replacing those if they start to degrade or degrade, um, early. Um, but those warranties do match the life of the contract, 25 to 40 years. Was there, okay, thank you.
I have a few questions for you. Thank you for being here, uh, this evening. Um, first of all, with regards to the pile driving that you mentioned, I wanted to confirm when the work times of the project would be with regards to the pile driving, making sure that wouldn't be done at night?
Um, I believe, and the county can correct me, I believe we had the hours of eight to five.
Okay.
But let me see if it's on my condition list here. Or, I'm sorry, it's, uh, we have right now seven to seven.
Seven to seven, okay. All right. So there could be pile driving early evening hours, but that would be, okay, thank you.
And I think we would be open to a condition for that period of construction as well.
Okay.
If that would be something the, the board would ask us to do.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, I'm assuming the project is contingent upon Ameren approving their build-out on their side. Is that true?
It is.
Okay.
Um,
All right.
so I can talk about that a bit, because we do have the supplemental review, and we've completed a site walk with Ameren. We do have those preliminary cost estimates and details about the project. They can fluctuate from that first review to the final review, but Ameren has gotten pretty good at their estimates. Um, so because we have made it through that supplemental review and the site walk, we feel pretty good about the project's ability to move forward. Um, that being said, the defining moment of if the project's moving forward or not from Ameren's perspective would be when we sign that agreement in August. And then the developer, uh, so Summit Ridge would also make the deposit, um, for the upgrade payment as well. So at that point, we, both parties have said that the project's moving forward. Um, but that being said, because we've made it this far, we feel pretty good about the project's ability to move forward.
Has Summit Ridge had any projects where Ameren did not approve them in the state of Illinois?
Yes. Um, mostly it relates to either a cost that is Yes. Mostly it relates to either a cost that is too high for the project to handle or the line at that area just can simply not handle a project being placed there. So we have had projects, most frequently, they'll need, they'll need to be downsized. So they might start at a five-megawatt project and they go to a three-megawatt project because Ameren can only handle three, they can't handle the five. But we have had some where the cost to have the project move forward is simply too, too high or Ameren does not want the project at that location.
Okay, thank you. And then in your slide presentation, you mentioned the subscriber credit program. With regards to that, is that open to any citizen in Adams County? Could be potentially a subscriber, who's that open to?
As long as they're a Ameren customer.
As long as they're an Ameren customer, okay.
And that is actually true. So Adams County or statewide, they just have to be an Ameren Illinois customer.
Okay. And what would, what would be a good estimate for the average citizen in Adams County to receive for a credit from this project?
It would typically be about a ten to fifteen percent reduction on their bill, depending on how much of the project they've subscribed to.
So if I had a two-hundred-dollar Ameren bill, I could suspect if I was a subscriber, then to have a twenty-dollar monthly credit on my bill from this project. Is that correct?
If you were to sign up for the project, so it won't happen automatically. The individuals or businesses would have to subscribe to this project or another project. But that is, your estimate is about right.
Yeah, but if I would, if I as an individual would subscribe, I would be eligible for the ten to fifteen percent credit.
That's correct.
I understand this approximation, but yes, okay.
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have a question. I understand that you guys are working out a road use agreement, and it's contingent upon that, I assume. You said for construction, six to seven months, or did I misread you?
That's correct.
Okay. After construction or post-construction, how, how much maintenance? How often do you see yourselves in the, in the field on a regular basis? What's an average?
Not very frequently. After the construction, the project, we're talking about mowing periodic maintenance on inverters if any equipment needs to be replaced. So you're probably looking at a half dozen times a year, someone going out to site maybe every month. But it will be very minimal. So the road use agreement should really be centered on the larger loads that are delivering equipment to site, as well as construction traffic. I think it will technically cover the rest, but that's what we'd be, or that's what I would suspect the commissioner would be most concerned with.
Okay. And to, to curtail on to Tim, Tim's question. What does it cost to be a subscriber to, to a facility like this?
Typically, there's no cost to subscribe. Occasionally, there'll be a fifty-dollar initial subscription fee. It really depends on the organization that's managing the subscriptions. So I would say that's about it. It's either free or fifty-dollar initiation fee.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a limit to how many people can sign up for this?
There is. So we would typically hold, I'm trying to think for this site system. Let me see if I have a number for you in my notes. I do not have a number of subscribers. I would say typically, the subscriptions would be a mix of commercial and residential customers. So I'd say roughly half would go to businesses and then maybe another half go to residences, depending on the project. But at the end of the day, the subscriptions would be capped by the size of the project. I could get you a, a better estimate of what that would look like on a per-project basis, but unfortunately, I don't have that in my notes.
Just for clarification, so Summit Ridge does not administer the subscription portion of this project, is it, is that correct?
We do not. So we contract with subscription management companies before the, typically before the project starts construction. And then we're in close communication with them during the process as well. So they know when the system's gonna go online, when they can start to reach out to subscribers as well. So we typically have someone in mind. IGS is a, a company that we've used before. I know that we've expanded that as well, but that's one name you could look at.
I had another question, and that is, if somebody does subscribe, and let's say they decide to opt out, what's the turnaround on that?
So usually, under that scenario, their subscription could go to someone else. That is one of the nice things about community solar in Illinois, because it's open to any Ameren customer, and there is a demand to save money on utility bills. Usually, they can fill in someone off a waiting list or someone else that has shown interest in the project. Or if a number of residential customers fill out, they could fill in with a commercial subscription as well. But that's usually how it's handled. If someone does move within Ameren territory, you could keep your subscription as well. So let's say you just moved up the road, but you're still an Ameren customer. You could take that with you. So that's another option if you were to fall out. Yep.
Are there any other questions?
At this. Just, just one second.
Go ahead.
Jim, did you discuss with them, like with the McNay one, about the three percent increase for the decommissioning, for the yearly increase?
I believe, and Maura, I can check in with Maura as well. I believe we were going to come back to the decommissioning estimate every five years. Is that where you all landed with Quincy McNay? So the bond would be adjusted every five years as a result, perhaps. I think that may have been where it landed instead of the three percent.
Mr. McCleary, if I may, the, the agreement with the state of Illinois contains a provision that the county can require after the tenth anniversary and every five years thereafter, to revisit the decommissioning process and basically at their expense, if needs to be, to determine how much and require them to post a bond. Now, having said that, we still may include the three percent increase in any event, but I'm not exactly sure what the utility would be, but that'd be part of the process.
Is that something that'd come back to the board?
Yeah, you made a, yes, I mean, for example, what you passed last time was the three percent every year. But, and it's also, that agreement is also included in the application and also will be part of the permit process. So you'll still avail yourself of that as well.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, the three percent, so I think you said the decommissioning cost was at three-eighty-nine, if I remember correctly?
Yes, let me grab that number.
Thank you, three-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand. So are we saying we are adding a three percent cost adjustment to that on an annual basis? Is that what we're saying? I just wanna make sure I understand.
Yes, it's my understanding, yes. And actually, the, the, the most direct response is kind of.
Okay.
And, and the reason I say that, it's in there. It's definitely a three percent in there. And then however, even though the three percent increase is there, it's gonna be revisited every five years. So under that scenario, well, given what's going, it'll be higher than, than three percent. Obviously, that could, could change. I think that it'd be Summit Energies, I think where they're coming from is that, like for example, for the first five years, they would probably post the entire amount for the first five years, including the three percent increase over those five years. And I think that they would like to revisit, well, if we're doing that, maybe we don't need the three percent. However, as of now, that three percent is in there. It's part of what you passed, and it's, it's part of the agreement. That's why I said kind of.
Okay, I understand, yeah. Okay, so Summit Ridge, I think I understand, it's every five years. We're not posting a bond, three percent annualized for the duration of the project out twenty-five years. I think that's, that's the change there on that. So, okay, thank you.
Jim, could you repeat that?
Yeah, so the duration, I think the terms of the contract are twenty-five years, if I remember.
Twenty-five with three, five-year extensions, so up to forty.
Yeah, so, so I think what Summit, my understanding is Keith, and, and I haven't been involved in these discussions, but my understanding from the discussion this evening is that we are allowing the cost of the project to be increased by three percent annually. Summit Ridge will post a bond for the three percent increase on the project up to five years, and then revisit that versus posting a bond today that is worth three percent for twenty-five years, which would be significantly more. That's my interpretation. That's my interpretation only. So that's, I wanna clarify that.
Thank you, because that makes sense. It's almost like you're dealing with like commercial property, where you do the five-year on the balloon.
Are there any other questions? If we can. As far as the agenda, talked about the receipt of, of written comments. My understanding, we did not receive any written comments. We'll have statements and presentations by other interested parties, and I know at least two of you preliminarily indicated that you wanted to speak. It was Mr. Drabus and Mr. Whitaker, I believe. If either one of you wanna address the committee or Summit Energy, now's your chance. Yeah, you do, so we can hear you. So are we. Could you come up here?
My name is Wayne Drabus. Address is fifty-four oh-six North Eighty-Fourth Street, Fowler, Illinois. We live approximately a quarter of a mile away from where this installation is gonna be. My wife's name is Jackie. She couldn't be here tonight. We both strongly oppose this installation. I've lived in that area all my life. I'm seventy-one years old. We live right in the vicinity. My brother and I, we own close to eight hundred acres right there in the immediate vicinity. And I just wanna go on record that I and my wife are strongly opposed to this. In my opinion, I think it'll end up being an eyesore in the community. The company building the, the project and the mixers, they're the only ones that's gonna be of any financial gain. The rest of us are just gonna have to look at it every day, going back and forth. I have to question the, the water quality that was mentioned. That is an extremely erodible piece of land right there where they're gonna build it. I, I thought they'd build it on the flat piece, but they're building it down on the highly erodible land. There will be erosion. When the water runs off the panels and down the hill, and there's a creek right down there, and I don't see how they can avoid messing up that creek, but maybe they can, but my opinion is that they won't. I just feel that it's gonna be an eyesore there. I, I see no benefit to the rest of the community. And now I'm stumped at what I was gonna say. Oh, I'm also very concerned about the possible devaluation of the land around that area. And my home is right there, practically, like I said, a quarter mile away. My brother lives a quarter mile away. There's other neighbors there that, to consider. I think there could be some devaluation of property, but I, that's just my opinion. I have also read about the the temperature elevation around these installations. I don't know how that might affect us in the long run. They say two to three degrees. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I've read. I don't know if that would affect crops in the long run or not. And I just, I just don't think we need it in that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker?
My name's Richie Whitaker. I live right next to where the solar farm will be going. I'm gonna be fifty foot off my property line. I do know that there's three bills that are currently in the process of being passed about being five hundred foot off the property line. I'm, I'm kinda wondering when this project will be started. If these bills get passed first, is this permit going to allow for them to continue with it anyways? I guess my other main issue that I have would be property values from studies. You know, there's obviously none right here in this area, but other ones within Illinois. There's studies showing quarter miles, solar farm next to your house, it, it could significantly drop. I wanna say it was like two-point-three percent, the value of your home. I just recently purchased this house, then a year ago, and here I am, gonna be losing value of it because of a solar farm coming near it. The other concern that I have is I've got two young kids at home. I don't want them possibly getting into something like this. It's, it's kinda dangerous for them. I don't know if any of you guys have ever been on a solar farm, but I've been on several of them within the area. There's some over in Jacksonville, Beardstown, Jerseyville, Springfield. I've been on all of those. That being said, they're, they're not very fun. There's mud everywhere. The roads are really crappy. The noise is crazy. The other thing that I have concerns about is the road. Our road, you cannot get very big trucks on. I have personally, you know, had this experience with it with my personal camper and truck. I mean, it's, it's hard, you can't go in, or it's hard not to go in the ditch. I mean, the road issue will be one of my main concerns, the traffic out there. That's my other concern is, right now, I mean, if you see someone drive through, you know who they are. The new people coming in with solar panels and everything. I'm concerned about the traffic with my kids. I mean, the neighborhood kids, they all play in the road. We have farmers that ride up and down the roads on four-wheelers and tractors. I mean, it's just, we are strongly against it, especially being so close to our property and the amount of traffic that it will bring. Also, will there be any kind of benefits for the Ellington Township with the roadways with this solar farm going in? Any kind of benefits for the neighbors around that'll be impacted by this? I think that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I know nobody else, before the meeting, indicated they wanted to speak, but is there anybody else out there that wanted to make a comment? There is one other person.
Can I just say here? Is there any studies on radiation as far as, like you said, yeah, between small children and animals too? Is there any studies on radiation as far as living within a hundred and seventy? Is there any studies on radiation as far as living within 177 foot of this proximity? Also, just something else to consider, a lot of our neighbors as well have farm animals as well as us. The temperature is mainly elevated, one, two, three percent is what I've seen. On the internet, is there anything, some studies there? I'm just curious as far as what, as far as my family, what we have to look out for.
The Summit Energy will give the, they'll have the opportunity to respond. And just for the record, saying that you're 177 feet away, and your last name is probably Whitaker. Your, your first name, just so we have it for the record?
Well, I'm actually Caitlin Bates.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, apologize. Well, I just noticed that Mr. Whitaker. Yeah, the 177 feet, that's what. If there are no other statements, you're going to have to yell, Mr. Drabus.
I was just wondering if there is any property taxes to get paid on this to Ellington Township? Or is it taxed exempt, or who pays the taxes, the property taxes? Can anyone answer that?
Well, the, the answer is, I believe so, but I, I think first, we'll give Summit Energy the, the opportunity to respond to the comments from both you and Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Bates. Yeah, could you come back up, please?
Okay, thank you everyone for the comments. I will try to cover as many of the, the questions as I can here. Let's see here. So I think I'll start with the concern about the water quality and erosion specifically that's going into the creek. So with regard to stormwater and erosion in particular, we're required to put together a stormwater plan with the state of Illinois. So during construction, we'd have silt fence up that would help any dirt stay on-site, and then after construction is completed and the vegetation is established, the silt fence is removed. That being said, depending on what the state wants to see, they may require us to change our grading. They may require us to have stormwater basins. That gets to find a little bit later, but that's typically how the water quality issue concern is addressed is through that stormwater prevention plan. That typically gets submitted along with the building permit as well. I'm not entirely sure if the county comments on the stormwater plan or if it just goes to the state. The, the board may know, but they do have the opportunity to, to provide comment to that as well. With regard to property values, I will say that, solar being relatively new, there are some studies to date about valuation of property, but as the speaker addressed, there are not extensive studies in the state of Illinois. So a lot of the studies that I would reference don't include Illinois as one of the states that were studied. It's, it's typically states that have a more established solar program. That being said, typically any project, or sorry, any property that's over a mile away from solar projects has not been shown to have any change to the property values based on those studies, and obviously addressing the limitations of those as well. With regard to, to security, especially in terms of getting inside of the array, we would look to our fence and any conditions that the county would, would want us to take into consideration. Right now, the project plans to have agricultural-style fence, seven feet. We are open to discussing if another type of fence would be better for the community. The gate is typically locked, and then the dangerous equipment, I guess you could call it, would have warning signs. I'm talking about the inverters. The panels themselves present, present less harm, but obviously we don't want anybody touching an inverter as well. So how we would address the carries through the fence signage, that's the, the main ways, to be honest. But we are open to placing any conditions on the site as well. The county may deem reasonable. With regard to, let's see, what have I not addressed here? So I believe property tax was also a question that arose. I have not looked at the millage for this parcel yet, but typically a portion of the property taxes is going to the township. I would need to go back and see exactly how that's being lined up. The solar developer is responsible for any property taxes that increase as a result of the project, and then the, the family or the underlying property owner, they pay for the property tax for the land itself. So those are actually taxed separately in the state, the land versus the, the array. There was a, a question about farm animals as well. I would look to our fence for that question. Again, this is agricultural-style fence, so similar to what you've probably seen on other projects with the, the wooden post typically. Again, we're open to condition regarding the fence. There is typically a small opening at the bottom of the fence for small animals. I know the question is more so about larger livestock. Let's see.
There is a question about radiation?
I, I don't have a direct response to that question. There hasn't, I think you have to be sworn in, but if, is he allowed to come up as well?
Yeah, are you with Summit Energy? Yep, you're subject to cross-examination, you have to be sworn in.
Okay.
What, yeah, get sworn in first, then.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Kyle Hawkinson. I'm a director of project management with Summit Ridge Energy. Base offices in Chicago, I actually live in St. Louis. To the question regarding radiation, big picture, right? We are, as a solar developer and a, and a producer of energy, we want to absorb energy. We're not emitting radiation, we're absorbing radiation, turning that from UV to electricity, usable electricity. So our facility, to our knowledge and industry, industry's knowledge as well, does not emit radiation like you would see with, with an X-ray machine or an MRI. That, that's not the radiation that our facilities gather and then turn into usable electricity. That's just not how the system works, if that answers your, your question at all. Does that, did you have anything else to add to that question? I didn't know if there was any other operational questions, just from the project management side?
Are there any more questions for Mr.?
I, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So the, the, the interconnect with Ameren, is it going to, it's, it, is it connecting to existing Ameren infrastructure?
That's correct, yeah.
So the power lines that are there in the area now, they won't change?
There are proposed, if, I think there's another slide that we could show that actually has a better view of the pole lineup for the project. I don't know if it's forward or back, if somebody doesn't mind advancing the slides.
Do you know which slide it is?
I think it's pretty close to this one. Yeah, this is actually a good example. So the main line that's existing on the south side of Eubanks Road, there won't be any changes to those poles, but what we are showing for the interconnection of the project, as you can see, I'll point it out here on the screen here in a moment, I believe there are, there's at least five new poles being proposed for the interconnection of the facility, similar in nature to the poles that are existing on the south side of Eubanks Road, that's correct.
So the, the reasoning for my questioning is, is the, basically the power that's traversing the lines in that area wouldn't be any different than it is today, essentially?
Correct, the reliability would not be affected if, if that's the nature of your question.
That basically leads into like, any type of EMF in the area would essentially remain the same.
Correct, yeah, there, there wouldn't be any adverse effect to our knowledge or, or the industry's knowledge, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
So these new poles, they'll all be on the project site, or they're going to be on the neighbors?
The new poles that are proposed, again, I'll, I'll actually point them out right now. They are the red dots that are located right here, so they are on the proposed project site in our lease area, that's correct. Yep, thank you, Mr. Post. There was a question on the fence, and maybe pertaining, one, to animals, but then, two, to site security. At least my team on the operations side, construction, the facility, we take security very seriously. So again, we would be very open to, and this is actually something we've been practicing as of late due to security for theft, more so than neighbors with children or whatnot. Putting a fence up before construction begins to make sure that the site remains safe. We're totally open to that, and I actually encourage our contractors to consider that in their construction mobilization plan. Get the site secured so we can't have outside entities, animals, persons entering the site that shouldn't be there for their own safety. That's typically what we do as best practice.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Considering this is a new project, and from what I'm hearing out of your neighbors, you know, they're talking, I heard, three eyesores. Is there a reason why you didn't go underground up to where you're going to be connecting off of one of the poles?
So, yeah, again, I can try my best to answer that question. Ameren's infrastructure being overhead already, they dictate ultimately the method by which we interconnect. So here in Quincy, you know, if you're a residential customer, an industrial customer, a commercial customer, you may already have an underground service that feeds, you know, your, your residence, your building or, you know, office structure, wherever it may be, out on the proposed project location. Being that that infrastructure is already overhead, you can see it, you know, overhead lines and whatnot, we have to interconnect to that, and Ameren does not allow us to use their existing infrastructure to serve the project for purposes of safety. NESC, actually, there's code requirements around having an isolate, having a means of isolation that's safe for not only linemen, but all persons. So those proposed five poles that we're showing here, it could be up to six, depending on what the final result of the study is with Ameren. That dictates that those poles be, the, the structure and the interconnection be above ground.
So you're basically, what you're telling me, it's just Ameren is not allowing?
Their infrastructure that's existing, that is the only way to connect to their facility is to go above ground, that's correct.
Okay, because I've seen facilities go in that had 440, and they were able to go underground, and they were like on, you know, 750,000 square foot.
Sure.
You know, facilities and, and up to a million five, when they were able to, and they had pretty good sized setbacks, like 300 feet. And they, they wanted, they had the existing pole with the transformer, and they still went underground at the facility just for, because of just by the code.
Yeah, I could maybe expand on that a little bit further. So the, the equipment that Ameren requires to isolate us as a generating facility, that equipment has to be on a pole, essentially, for the infrastructure that we're connecting to. So that's, in industry, they call that a recloser. We actually have one, and Ameren has one for redundancy. There is a, what's called a pole top switch, synonymous with a ground-operated air brake or a GOAB. That is required. Ameren does not accept anything less than that, again, that's a safety requirement.
Well, that I get. It's just the other five poles, or four poles.
Yeah, and, and actually, that's a good point. Three of these proposed five poles, it could be three being Ameren and three being ours. The three poles that Ameren owns, they are theirs wholly. So really, we're talking about the poles that we have ownership of as the developer and the owner of the project. There's three poles that will reside and be cared for by our operations and, and maintenance team, but could be up to six in total, including Ameren's.
Do you know the approximate height of the poles?
I believe the existing poles on the south side of Eubanks are upwards of 65. They could be 75 feet, I believe, above grade. Our poles will be, I believe, equal height, no taller, above grade. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Great question. What was your name, sir? Lael. So the, the method that Ameren employs, again, that part of the pole lineup that they will own, instead of doing a down guy, we actually talked about this with the Ameren folks on the sidewalk, instead of doing a timber pole with a down guy that's going south or further into the field on Eubanks Road, on the south side of Eubanks Road, they're going to use a composite pole which can support itself without any additional guying. That's what they're considering. If the span that will cross Eubanks Road overhead requires that that be a composite pole, but either way, there is not a guy wire proposed that would go outside of their existing easement, right? But our intention, and again, best practices, we would want to avoid any impact on, on your property or any other neighbor for the purposes of interconnecting specifically, yeah. So that's, that's not currently considered as a requirement to interconnect the project. We want to avoid that. Good question. Yes, sir. In what, by what nature? Yeah, it's a good, Mr.? That could be, Mr. Whitaker, correct? Yes. The purpose of a road use agreement is to maintain the condition of the road. My interpretation, right, as an operations person, our intention and our requirement per the road use agreement that's in draft form that we're going to finalize with the county, our obligation is to maintain the condition of that road as the, as found condition, right? So if it is currently the condition, what we typically do is an as-found survey. So we, you know, go out, take a video, we take pictures. We, we basically provide a record of what that road's condition is when we start or before we start construction. Our obligation is to maintain or restore that road to that condition after the completion of the project. And I think it was a question potentially from somebody from the board. Maybe not the board, I'll come back, I'll come back to that if I remember that part. But does that answer your question, Mr. Whitaker?
I have one last one.
Yes, sir.
And this is, I know it's going to sound like circular reasoning, but there is a purpose behind it. PG&E and Edison did charge for any excess electricity that went through their lines. So, and you got your neighbors here. Well, when that does happen, or you have to shut down, will that, that charge exclusively go to your subscribers?
Maybe to build on Bridget's response to this question, and maybe to widen the, the response here. So the process of, like Bridget mentioned, curtailment, right? We are, the, the purpose of us generating energy for the benefit of subscribers that subscribe to our project, they're buying a block of energy from us. We have to produce that energy to get paid for that generation. If we are asked by the utility not to, you know, exceed a, you know, the load that's on the circuit, and that's always changing, we're not going to generate to that. We're also subject to the weather, but there, at least in the Ameren environment in the state of Illinois, there are not fees that are charged to generators for over-generation. And that's actually something that's developing right now as of late with Ameren. They are very in tune with what the grid needs to maintain stability and what they require of us as developers and operators of generating facilities to make sure that we are not affecting the reliability, right? So I'm not going to say it will never occur, but there are almost no instances where we can overproduce and cause that situation, at least in the state of Illinois, on an Ameren interconnected project. And as Bridget mentioned, if there were fees incurred that ultimately the project company would be responsible for, that would come back to us as, as the developers on a ridge.
Okay, because I mean, as someone that also has been a business owner, you had, you still have to look at who's going to eat that cost.
Right.
And that's why I'm worried for your neighbors.
Yeah, it, it's, it's a good question. We believe it's us, we would be responsible for that cost. But as Bridget mentioned, maybe I can expand on that lightly. The credit, maybe I believe one of the community board members mentioned this. What does the cost difference look like on a bill? You know, you might see a credit scenario in some utilities. We actually have some folks, I don't think anybody from Summit Ridge here is an active subscriber to Ameren projects that have a, a subscription basis that they're subscribed to for their power. Typically, when you're a subscriber, you're buying a, a block of power from a facility that can generate a renewable resource, whether that's wind, whether that's solar. a, a block of power from a facility that can generate a renewable resource, whether that's wind, whether that's solar, other, other means and methods. But, you know, say that's a thousand kilowatt hours or a megawatt hour block, that's typically what we see. You're buying that at a, at a fixed price, right? So you as a, a, a subscriber will get the power for that block price, but you wouldn't necessarily always see a credit. So if you looked at your neighbor that wasn't a, a subscriber to your project, your bill, if it's $200, you know, their bill might be 220 or 240, right? So it just depends on how the bill credit is, is really applied, but it may not always look like a credit, if that makes sense. I think Mr. Finley had that question earlier.
So if I understand your explanation correctly, if I'm currently paying, let's say, nine cents a kilowatt, and I go as a subscriber and I buy it for six cents, you're going to, I'm going to see a credit on my bill for three cents a kilowatt used. Am I describing that correctly?
You would see, in, in my current understanding with Ameren, you would see a, a three cent difference in your scenario from between yourself and a non-subscribed power consumer. Yeah.
Follow-up question with regards to maintaining the property once it's built.
Question.
What's your frequency in coming in mowing, maintaining, because you indicated you're going to have evergreens 10 foot apart, maintaining those and just the overall appearance of the property?
Yeah, it's a good question. We will, of course, abide by the county's requirements. Typically, on projects that have screening or a pollinator friendly planting, the governing body being the HJ or the county, whether it's city, county, the frequency of operations and maintenance visits in season. At minimum, there's usually a, a, every six months, there is a O and M team coming out to inspect the system, one for electrical safety, operation, but then also vegetation, vegetation and the maintenance thereof. So obviously during the summertime, if we're going to have to cut the grass, they could be there as, as many as six times, as Bridget mentioned, once a month, if it's a really wet season. That's really dependent. We do have a DAS or a SCADA system with cameras and whatnot that can monitor grass height. So we can actually see if, you know, if we're exceeding the county's requirements, you know, down south, we have projects that have polliners, if anybody in the room knows. If you cut polliners too short, they're not going to pollinate, they're not going to serve the purpose. So we don't want to cut our flowers necessarily, but we don't want them to, you know, have weeds in our mix that are exceeding the, the county's requirements for, for vegetation. So it's something we have to observe. But at least twice a year, we would expect to be out there, but for vegetation crews in season, it could be once a month or once every other month from April to October. So, yeah.
And one last question, and where specifically are your storage facility, the shed?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question. On this screen, and it might be better to see another layout of this, the proposed storage, it's going to be a shed, pre-built shed that will set on a concrete foundation and anchored on site. That is proposed just to the southwest of the equipment pad where the transformer and the inverter are located. So I'll point that out here on screen. This, this will be a tight piece to see. But located right, the box that's on screen here, just to the southwest of the, the hammerhead in the driveway.
So I guess my question is off of, what is it, Eubank Street? So you're going to have like a, the main entrance will be in there, and then what's the offset from the road where the storage is going to be?
We could get you that number precisely if you're looking for that. I, I don't know if I could accurately.
That's fine. And then I understood something about the river, like a creek, and then what's the grade on the property?
We'd have to look, I'd have to look that up to be precise about it. Yeah. As Bridget mentioned, just talking about the SWIP, I, I might expand on that just for a moment. NPDES, which is managed by the state of Illinois, the EPA. We put measures in place, and I've actually been on facilities in my career where we had soil moving. That is the enemy of, of farmers. That's the enemy for us. We don't want soil leaving the site. So it's our obligation to keep the soil that's on the site remaining on site. So we would propose during the construction process to potentially have a temporary seeding, so, you know, rye, oats, something that will help us maintain the soil in position that would get planted before mobilization and pile driving, module installation, get that to take. We will, of course, have the crop residue from this year. I think there is corn in that field currently that I believe the farmer is going to, I don't know if they will till, but they're, they're going to harvest, obviously. So we'll have crop residue and then plant a temporary seeding, getting close to the final completion portion of the project, we'll plant our, our final seeding, which will be the pollinator mix. Yeah. Yes, sir. I, I believe it's the Mixer family. Mr. Whitaker might have pointed that out. Yeah. The Mixer family. I, I'm not sure.
It's, it's titled in the, the name of a trust, and I, and I can't tell you who the beneficiaries of the trust are.
Yep. In terms of grading, you mean, Mr. Whitaker? No, it's, it's actually something, I, I was on the sidewalk and did the initial inspection with Ameren personally. We don't propose, and typically best practices, we don't want to do any grading. I don't want to move dirt on the site if I don't have to. Our, our racking system is, it's not topographically following. So our, our rows, as you can see on the screen here, they're running north to south. So ideal scenario for a solar facility is to be completely in plain or a flat surface, obviously, like you and I both know, that is not the case on this site. The slope moves from west downhill to the east towards the creek. So we might have piles that exceed, you know, a typical height. But just to get the foundation in the ground, I don't know if that answers your question. Really up to Ameren. I think Bridget mentioned that. The construction duration, we, we know, we're pretty good at estimating that six to seven month timeframe. I believe the fall is when we want to try to get, correct, if we can. That's ultimately, again, dictated, that's as early as we could go. Could be next year. Ameren has quite a long lead time on some equipment that we need for the project, but. I, yeah, I'm not personally the best resource to ask that question of, unfortunately. Yeah. Absolutely, we could take them. I don't know if I know the answer to that question just at this time. Yeah, but, you know, we obviously have to abide by what the state legislature imposes on us and, yeah.
Are your panels going to be moving?
Yes, Mr. Bellis, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. This is proposed, I think Bridget hit on this lightly. The system is proposed to be a single axis tracking system, so the panels during the day will follow the sun, starting in the east and finishing in the west, anywhere from about 55 degrees in the morning to west 55 degrees in the afternoon, correct?
So those motors that rotate or move that are whisper quiet?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is a, it's a PID control. I don't know if, if anybody in the room is familiar, but yeah, it's, you don't hear them running. It's a row by row tracking system, so there's AC power actually out to every single row that operates the trackers. And there's DC driven motors on that tracking system. So, thank you. Yes, ma'am. We, of course, are observant of privacy concerns, so I think there's also a law in the state that requires that anything that that, that camera captures be kept, you know, on the property. So really, the purpose of that camera is to make sure the gate is shut, to check the equipment, to make sure there are no issues with it. Obviously, there's not really a fire concern with this equipment, though we want to pay attention to that. But, yeah, checking if the gate's closed, you know, making sure we don't have any animals, deer, you know, dogs getting inside the facility. But absolutely noting, I think the nature of your question, those cameras, the images that they capture, you know, they are to remain inside the facility. And that speaks partially to the proposed screening as well from, from your guys' property neighboring this proposed project to the east. That screening also, you know, provides a, the privacy that inherently would. Understood, yeah, absolutely understood. Yep. It's cellular, the DAS, SCADA system, everything reports cellularly. Yeah.
Actually, one last. Just as a good neighbor, are you guys going to have like a some signs with phone numbers if there, something comes up with your neighbors that can get in contact with you guys?
Yeah, our, obviously, you know, we can provide our contact information, want to mitigate any nuisance disturbance to neighbors. Obviously, the construction phases, as Bridget mentioned, is the loudest part of, of the project. And to clarify, that's, you know, potentially two weeks during construction, that the piles for the racking system would be being driven in the field. I don't know if that answers your question, though.
With regards to the, the pile driving, would any, should any neighbors be concerned, or what's your experience been with vibration with regards to the pile driving?
In terms of ground vibration experienced at a neighbor's property?
Yes, sir.
I have not personally driven piles on the machine, but I have been on site when piles have been driven within 10 foot radius and hundreds of feet away. The noise is something that you hear more prevalently than vibration in the ground. And we're talking about a pile that's 12, 15 feet in length, right? And the closest neighbors, right, that we're talking about here, obviously, they're more than 50 feet away. I'm not going to say it's zero that they would experience, but we're not going to be shaking people's houses driving piles. Definitely more concerned about the noise typically. Yeah.
And then what was the depth again?
Of embedment, is that your, the, the embedment depth of the piles, is that your question? That's typically dictated, one, by the geotech that we're waiting on. We need to understand, you know, the soil conditions that'll support the racking system. Ultimately, the concern there is we don't want panels flying. So we need to have our piles deep enough in the ground to resist the wind and uplift forces.
Okay, so you said you had soul samples back then?
Don't, well, the geotech report's not complete yet, but typically I can give a ballpark estimate, the embedment depth. Any, anywhere between six to 10 feet, depending on how tall the vines are. Yeah.
I was thinking 50, 60.
Oh, no. Yeah, no, we're not putting in bridges. Yeah, good question.
If there are no other questions, I'm going to make a couple concluding remarks. And that is, is the, the purpose of tonight is to review the application and see if the application requires with the statutory requirements and the county code. And the county code basically includes the statutory requirements. So at this point, you know, as far as setback lines, questions in regard to erosion, the road use agreement, some of those things are addressed in the application, some of them will be addressed later on. And having said that, I mean, the questions are really good tonight because a public hearing after the application is approved with conditions, I, I don't think there's another public hearing required when they issue the permit. So I mean, the questions you're asking tonight are really good as far as down the road. I, I will tell everybody that on the last application, the, the county negotiated some terms, and, and, and to some extent, this is going to be a learning experience. And what the, the county did is they looked what other counties did and included those in conditions, and also depending upon the circumstances, came up with their own. And, and one of them was is an annual inspection for safety purposes and for the, the cover. And that inspection is to be paid by the applicant on a yearly basis, reasonable is what was included in there. So that, there is a, and the other conditions that were included, there is an annual inspection. And theoretically, if they are not in compliance, not only now, but let's say three years from now, or five years from now, or seven years from now, the, the county has the ability to revoke the permit. Now, I mean, that's, that's a huge step. So I don't want to say it's taken lightly, or that would happen just as a matter of course, but there are things that they've, they've tried to, to build in. You know, you're talking about things like erosion, it's included with, in the, the, the application, and they have to submit something to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and the department has to approve on it. It, it's kind of out of the county's control as far as the terms of that, other than to make sure it's in the agreement, and then we have annual inspections. So I, that probably doesn't allay your concerns, but to the extent that the county can, they're, they're being addressed. I may have stepped a little bit out of bounds, but I just want to put things in perspective as far as what we're doing tonight. Since I said something, I don't think anybody else has any comments or questions.
Can I ask a question to some of the neighbors, if it be possible, please? Any of you adjoining property owners, do you have any field tile drainage coming from the Mixer property onto your properties? Do you have any field tiles drainage at all? No? Okay, I just. Okay, I just want to check on it. Thank you.
Mr. Finley, if I, if I may, would comment too, part of the construction process that, that we employ is a drain tile survey, right? So I know from walking the site, there are risers in that field, so I believe there is a drain tile system. There may, I think there is some terraces in there as well for collecting sediment. So, you know, as one of the community members mentioned, that, the slope of that ground is, is definitely something we will pay attention to closely. I don't want a silt fence filling up, you know, with sediment. That's the thing we want to avoid. So part of that is, you know, in the, the risers for the drain tile, they're obviously in the field, they will likely have straw boundaries built around them to make sure that sediment isn't entering them and then exiting into the creek, because obviously we're not going to put silt fence in the middle of the field. We'll do that with straw wattle or straw bales or something to that effect. But I do believe there is a drain tile system that enter, that captures water, surface water, and passes it out to the, the creek that's on the east side of the project. Yeah, I believe so. And ultimately, the governing body that would dictate we maintain soil on the site being NPDES under the state of Illinois EPA, they will not accept any sediment at, entering that waterway. So we have to maintain that per state regulation. Uh, in terms of water? Being that the, and, and to give. So we're saying. To, so to give maybe context to the question and maybe clarify for myself, right? You're talking about when the solar panels are fully installed and we have grass growing in the whole array, maybe basically completion of construction essentially is, that's when you'd be concerned. Right? So. Right. So the, the construction process for a community solar facility as opposed to a commercial or utility scale solar facility, we're using equipment that has less ground impact on a per square foot or a PSI basis than the tractors and equipment, the harvesting equipment that's going through this field, right? So the, the heaviest piece of equipment that's going to go through this field is likely going to be the pile driver. It could be a a skid steer, right? So you're talking about a track machine already as opposed to a wheeled. Yep, I'm, I'm getting to that. Right, so we would not, I guess what I'm saying is, we would not be causing additional compaction from what I've seen in the past. Therefore, we're maintaining the soil's ability to absorb water, right? Plus, the vegetation that's going to be on this site will promote, I'd say worms lately is a point of discussion with the, the state of Illinois Department of Agriculture, right? Keeping the soil's ability to absorb water like a sponge and, and absorb that instead of causing it, you know, as you would see in a tillage operation, I know a lot of folks have switched over to vertical tillage lately. You would ideally, I don't have a study to support this tonight, I'm sure we can find one and provide it for record if needed. But from what we have experienced on our sites post-construction, we don't have gully washouts, you know, in the basins that are, you know, on a site like this that has some heavy. um, you know, in the basins that are, you know, on a site like this that has some heavy topography. So I, I, I would not expect, um, erosion or sediment to enter the creek in this case for this project. Two years post-construction, one, we're gonna have a great vegetative cover. That's my team's job to make sure we leave that site, uh, with a grass cover that is established and, and can prevent soil moving. Um, but we know it's gonna rain. Uh, the neighbors next to us are not gonna get any different, uh, rainfall. Um, and they're actively, typically, there, it looks like there's a lot of farming neighbors next to us. So they're gonna get the same water that we're getting. I, I wouldn't anticipate, um, you know, comparing us to, um, you know, a field that's being vertically tilled or, or heavy tilled. I, I don't believe we will be the source of soil entering the waterway, um, from my best understanding.
Sir, may, can we have your, your name? We have a court reporter taking all this down. Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, again, to the water, the basin, uh, whether the project's there or not, um, we're not causing additional water to be on the site. Uh, and I would propose, it's my opinion, um, that we're not causing additional compaction that would reduce the soil's ability to absorb water. We're using lighter equipment during construction. Plus, we're maintaining vegetative cover year-round, not just in-season for growing crop. Yeah.
Mr. Drabus?
Yes, sir.
Have you personally been on this site?
I have, yes, sir. Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, the corn was planted, uh, I think late April, early May.
Just a quick follow-up. So the existing drain tile system will remain in place, is that correct?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, as Bridget mentioned, we've entered into the AMA Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement with the state of Illinois. Uh, that agreement requires us to maintain the drainage as existing. Um, if there's any adverse effects from the installation of the array, uh, we are required to maintain that drainage as it is currently. That's correct.
Mr. Whitaker?
Uh, we, good question. Uh, so before construction, this may be speaking to Mr. Finley's question as well. Uh, we do a drain tile survey, uh, with a Illinois Department of Agriculture. I think he's either certified or recognized as, he's one of the, one of the few people in the state that testifies to drain tile for the purposes of agriculture, uh, related to solar projects. His name's Tom Huddleston, uh, with Huddleston McBride. So we actually employ him to come out and do a drain tile survey, survey grade, you know, drawing CAD file. We know where that tile is, we know where our piles are gonna be installed for the racking system. If we know either during construction, um, or really before construction, before any piles are driven, we know if we're gonna put a pile where a drain tile is located, uh, and it, again, it's our obligation to repair that drain tile so that we don't backwater up into the basin above. We'll reroute that tile, uh, usually locally around the pile. Worst case, if we have a tile and a row of piles that are in line, we will replace that entire tile line to maintain the drainage.
Need a break? You good? All right. I think that concludes that portion. I'm not sure if the, the committee wants to entertain a motion?
Are we at that point?
I think we are at that point.
I'd like to move that the committee give, uh, preliminary approval to the applications submitted by Fowler Illinois Solar One LLC, a subsidiary of Summit Ridge for the commercial solar project on Eubanks Road. And furthermore, the staff repair findings of facts and resolution with appropriate conditions for consideration, consent with the evidence and information presented tonight for presentation to the Transportation Building Technology Committee, to be held July 9th, 2024.
So moved.
I'll second it.
It has to be our committee.
That's right, okay.
Same.
All those. Are you saying aye? It's really not my, I'm, I'm taking over your thunder.
Yeah, all, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.